Okay, recording in progress. You're on, Madam Chair.
So it's 5:09 and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. At this time, we do not have a quorum, however, and one of the first things on the agenda was to welcome Member Alicia Moody. Faith Jackson just informed me that Alicia wasn't sworn in yet, so that won't, she's not here today. But we still would like to move forward with, we do have a guest here from the public, Jay Toulon, and I wanted to give him an opportunity to at least get on the record talking about the resolution that he's presented in the past. So Jay? Jay, are you there? Well, he was there a moment ago. I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, he's still online. I don't know where he's at. He must have stepped away from his computer. But caller number two is still online.
Right.
And I basically advised him that, you know, he could speak during the public session, so whatever updates he wanted to bring to us, I mean, certainly now is the time.
Oh, looks like Myra's here.
All right, so Myra's here too, so we'll note that. And maybe you want to just direct your question to Myra, because it seems like Jay disappeared.
Sure, sure. Good afternoon, Myra. It's Ava Hart.
Faith, if you can hear me, I'm back and Myra's here too.
Okay, Jay. Yep, we hear you.
Jay, we're at the public sessions, excuse me, we're at the public session section of our meeting. So we'd love to hear from you and Myra at this time.
I just have a question. It sounded like you were struggling with getting a quorum. Do you have a quorum?
We do not.
Are you gonna be able to consider the item that Myra and I are both on? This obviously where you both, I'm sure you understand the issue that we're on this call for. Are you gonna be able to consider it without a quorum tonight?
Well, we can at least hear, we can at least hear with any updates that you have and discuss that one sheeter. I think, Faith, that's where we were going. And at least have it on record, because we cannot vote without everyone. And so we gave at least nine minutes. And right now, we don't have a quorum.
And not only that, it will be up to the commission to decide exactly, tweak the language so it's applicable to Middletown and what they feel is feasible to present to the mayor and also eventually to the common council. So that would now be something that we would need you, Jay, or Myra to be a part of, because that belongs solely to the commission itself.
Totally get that. I mean, if I could, if you're asking if I'd like, either of us, Myra might want to say something too briefly, or me briefly, if you'd like some update information, I can tell you that in addition to South Windsor's Commission and Town Council adopting it, since I think we've last spoke, the Farmington Human Relations Commission, thankfully, my commission, adopted it and we are planning on moving it forward to the Town Council in June. Also, Weathersfield, Mansfield's Commission and Weathersfield, Mansfield, Farmington, and West Hartford's Commissions have also all adopted and endorsed the IHRA Working Definition and plan to, all four of the towns, plan to bring them forward for their, you know, forms of government to also adopt. So I just think it's important for whoever's on the call from your commission to understand that, you know, a lot of towns are beginning to move forward with this. Very thankfully and very happily and very proudly, rightfully. That's all. I just wanted to share those couple of things that have been going on since we last spoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Great. I'll just also add that, first of all, you know, we are, as everyone is horrified by the attacks both in Buffalo and in Laguna Woods this weekend, that were horrific, horrific attacks, racist, hate-filled attacks. And we stand very much in solidarity with our community partners and all communities. And, you know, this kind of hatred is something that we really need to raise our voices against collectively. And this is something that you all know that we at AJC have done since the day we were founded, since 1906. And we reached out immediately on Saturday night to Mayor Brown in Buffalo and to our entire community of conscience in Westchester and throughout Connecticut to share our deepest, deepest sorrow at these horrific attacks. And it doubles our resolve to work against hatred of any sort in this country, because there's just no room for it. And as we just, you know, also observe the anniversary of Brown v Board of Education, which research that AJC did actually, which was cited in the brief that helped finally deal with Brown v Board, you know, we just have so much more work to do. And I think that that really speaks volumes, that we are all committed to working against hate of all kinds. And so, you know, I just want to go on record of the condemnation of this kind of horrific supremacist, white supremacist, in particular, ideology that has taken hold and spread and informed in whatever way the perpetrator of the attacks. And may the memories of all of the victims be a blessing. We just are horrified by it.
Thank you, Myra. Thanks for saying that.
It is very heartfelt. And through all of AJC.
Well, it's unfortunate. These are some difficult times and you're gonna see more of this uncovering coming forth as, you know, as the scales continue to tilt to, it's like, it's like this and it's now dependent on, it's starting to move like this. And you're gonna see more of that, because people, those that are in power never, that's why, you know, you talk about inclusion. I said, it's very difficult for a major group of people who excluded people of color across the board and and for ethnic, their ethnic background Jews, Hispanics, you know, immigrants. The scale is tipping. And that's by Mother Nature. That's not by anything that man is forcing. So when you've excluded a whole group of people for a long period of time, it's very difficult when these groups of people are now saying inclusion to even change your mindset to include these groups of people at the table and anything that you're doing that they now must be included in your thought process. And there's gonna be that great big resistance not to have that happen. So we're gonna see more of this come to light and, you know, how do you stop somebody from getting a gun? That's the whole thing. That's the key right now. And getting a handle on that. And we have teenagers doing it. We don't have older people. We have young people who've been brainwashed to think that they are of a superior race and superiority in this nation. And it's very, very sad. This is, that is learnt. That is not something that's inherent. That's learnt.
Right. We had, you know, we had a sign, an advertisement that we had done years ago in major newspapers that literally said, "No one is born hating." And this was a major, major ad campaign that we did from AJC. And it's precisely that. Hatred is learned, but we can also teach understanding and respect and love and acceptance of the other and understanding what the other is. And there's actually a Jewish educational philosopher that I studied when I was getting my master's degree, and he actually said, "The best way to think about the other in whatever way is to think about when you go to a door and you say 'after you.'" And if we use that concept of after you in everything that we do in terms of our lives and our educational approach, we're going to teach love and, you know, that that is really the thing that we're gonna be doing, is teaching love and respect. Because it's that respect, it's after you, that, you know, if we can engrain that in our communities, in our children, we're going to be better off. I agree.
Well, the truth must be, the truth must be taught. And that's the, that's the thing that's occurring now is truth is coming, truth is really rearing its head. It's coming forth and the true story, the true picture, we as a nation have to heal. So you can only heal by telling the truth in order for those individuals to understand why we are at the crossroads that we're at, is because they've been denied the truth, the truth has been hidden, and they've been living basically terrible lies. You know, like you say, Christopher Columbus discovered America. No, he didn't. How can you discover something when the Indians were already here?
Exactly.
So, I mean, people want to reject that and the truth needs to be taught. And how painful it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna hurt. It hurts on both sides. It hurts for us to have to even, you know, educate other people about our terrible plight that they created. But who's gonna do it? Because they're not doing it. So we have to basically teach them, this is what happened. This is the true history. We share in this nation equally with you because we built it.
Literally.
You know, our ancestors bled and died and sacrificed many things to evolve this nation, bring it to where it's at now. And it's always been a fight. And guess what? The fight's not over with.
I agree. And I think, you know, that's why we have to educate and we have to stand up as government officials and as community leaders and stand up with one another. And that's, you know, if we do that, then we show the strength of the diversity in our communities. And the diversity is something that we should honor and cherish and celebrate, rather than have it be something that divides us.
Exactly. And social media now, before you couldn't, you couldn't see all these, these really terrible things, but now you can see it. And when you see it, the question is, and what will you do about it? And what will you do? What can we do or what will you do to help move forward changing the mindsets and the viewpoint of this world so that we all can get to an inclusive, equal balance? Because the scales are turning as far as who's gonna be, the race is just gonna be people of color. It's just gonna be people of color. It really is. And we have no control over it, because that's nature. It's changing that way.
Right. And we should celebrate that.
Now we have to embrace it. We have to embrace it.
Hi, Myra and Jay. This is Sanji. I met you before in the first presentation. You have to excuse me. I'm a little bit under the weather. I really do appreciate what the work that you two are doing and it is never-ending. It's just never-ending. It's going on and on and on. And I know that you just mentioned the horrific scene that took place in Buffalo over the weekend. And, you know, it kind of hits close to home, because my in-laws are in Buffalo. And I'm getting a call from my sister-in-law and she's afraid to go to the grocery store now. So she calls me and she's like, stay on the phone with me. I have to go to the store. I have to do this. And I said, well, you know, can you order your groceries online now? She's like, I don't know how to, excuse me. She's like, I don't know how to do that. I don't do that. I'm used to going to the store. And that same grocery store is somewhere that we've shopped at. You know, I have the Tops grocery, the bags at my house. So I'm like, well, you know, go with someone. But then if you go with someone, there's a chance that they both could be taken out. And, you know, she's been telling me like over the course of like the past year that they've had threats within the high schools and the middle schools, where they've had to close the schools because they've gotten bomb threats. So this isn't just an isolated incident. They've been having problems that have been going on that we don't know anything about, because it's not shared.
Right.
And then she said that this person that they drove like a half an hour away with the intent to kill people.
No, they drove 200 miles. So that's more than a half an hour.
But, you know, it's terrible. And then even over the weekend here, there were a bunch of bike riders like taking over their streets. And this was just up here in Connecticut that, you know, we don't know about. Because it's not broadcast on the news, but it's happening.
It's just inconceivable.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, I was just gonna say real quickly, it's, obviously, I agree with everything that you're saying. And it was beyond horrific. It's amazing what you just said, Sanji, about your relative that's afraid to go grocery shopping by themselves is just inconceivable. And this was, you know, and I guess age, I guess there is no such thing as the right or wrong age to do something like this. This young man was 18 years old. Clearly, it was, this was something learned. I hate to point fingers at probably his parents, but I don't, you can't figure unless he's learning it in school, which I doubt. He has to have learned it from family members. An 18-year-old young man with a 600-page manifesto with all this horrible hate, it's just amazing to me. It's just shocking and amazing and very, very sad.
And just reading in the comments Deb had posted, "To teach the young rather than try to re-educate the old." And, you know, just a few days ago, I saw briefly on the news that like an 18-year-old young man was arrested with his grandfather for trying to make AR-15s. So, an older man is educating a young man, but he's teaching him hate.
It's, you know, it's, that's why we have to stand up with each other. That's the only thing I can say besides education, education, education. It's, you know, the old adage of real estate, location, location, location. It's education, education, education. But we have, I think we have a power to stand up publicly with one another. And you know, I don't want to minimize that. I think that it's critical that we do that. And I, I don't know if you all saw over the weekend, I think it went viral. There was a, like a Lyft driver or an Uber driver. Did you all see this? It went viral on social media. I don't remember the town he was in. Somebody got in the ride. He was, he was white, the driver. And somebody got in the car who was also white, who started making very racist comments, saying, "Oh, thank God you're white," and da-da-da-da-da. And this guy, to his credit, and I think this is part of what's so important, is every individual can make a difference. It's not just government officials. It's not just faith leaders, et cetera. You know, that everybody has the ability to stand up to hatred. So these people got in the car. I'm not going to say what they said, because it's, those words should never be uttered. But they said some really horrific things and they said, "Oh, thank God you're white," and blah, 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 blah. And he said, "I'm sorry, that's racist. Please get out of my car. I am not taking you as my passengers." And then the spouse of the woman started saying really bad words and slurs. And he said, "I am recording this and I am not going to support your racism. Get out of my car. I'm calling the police."
Wow.
And I think that that's such a powerful moment. It really struck me so deeply, because it really does mean that we can teach people to be upstanders, no matter what, no matter what role they may have in the world. It was a bright moment in a very dark day.
I really appreciate this conversation, Myra, and the words that you spoke earlier. And I know for me, I feel like I understand the role of AJC now and I plan to support, I plan to support moving, moving the amendment, not the amendment, the resolution forward, because I do understand that you guys are doing the work for everyone. And you're right. And now is the time to act and to not sit on things. And we've been sitting on this too long at this point. So I'll do whatever I can to move things forward.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that, Ava. And we really are here to work together. I mean, that's, that's why we're here. I have the great honor and privilege of being able to stand up for what's right and do that with partners in our community. So I just want to say thank you and looking forward to standing together on many, many important issues for all of our communities.
That goes for me as well. And very appreciative that your commission is, you know, is considering some form of this resolution to bring forward, because it is really important that this, you know, that this does, you know, that this continues. You know, so just thank you. And actually, I appreciate being included in the credit. Yes, I hawked you off. That's a Yiddish word. I was persistent in trying to coordinate with these towns. Myra really gets the credit for presenting this. So I appreciate being included in this conversation. But, you know, I did some work, but Myra is really the one that's doing this presentation. So I'm very thankful to be associated with her and with AJC and with you guys, my former hometown.
I don't take credit. I just say, let's stand up together, you know.
Credit's not the right word, Myra. You're right. Not the right word.
No, I really appreciate the partnership. I think we have friends and potential friends. And that's how we're gonna change the world.
All right. We have to work together.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, this guy's manifesto was filled with hate against the Black community, against the Jewish community. You know, and it's, it is scary stuff that is out there. It is scary how he was so easily influenced. And he was apparently bored during COVID. And that's how he started cluing into this on social media. We need to start working even more with social media platforms to get them to take responsibility for this stuff that is on their platforms. We've been working with several of the national and global social media platforms to get them to address it. The interesting challenge is that Europe has a very tough stance on these things and the United States has a more open, tolerant policy to this, just in terms of the laws. But I do know that Connecticut Attorney General Tong is looking at these issues very deeply as well. Because also it affects body image for young women as well. The same kind of stuff that can, you know, spread hatred towards another community also causes young women to have terrible body images and things like that. And we know the outcomes of some of those issues too.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Well, since, I mean, we don't have a quorum. And this discussion is important though, because it's recorded. And this will at least, like I said, help us move things forward.
Sure.
Faith, I'm sorry to call on you. I don't know what to do.
There isn't anything to do at this point here. I mean, you can't vote on anything. I mean, I think you guys are gonna have to go into session and decide what it is that you want to present to the council. You can start looking at that. That's, that's only recommendation I have for you at this time.
Okay. So I'll just thank Myra and Jay for being here today. And I'll move us into the regular meeting session.
Right. They provided us with the three-page document, but as Councilman Gennaro said, that it's too long to present to the council. So we're gonna take, I think, a good, I'm looking at it, taking a good portion of the wheresses, because that's how ours is done. And then getting down to the wheresses near the end and then having the whole three-page document available as a backup to the resolution that gets approved by the council. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us participate in this conversation. It's a real important conversation. And hopefully, you'll, you know, you'll be able to get a quorum at your next meeting and work towards moving this forward. I'm gonna back, I'm gonna back out of the call right now. Thank you so much.
Right. And soon as, when we get our draft done and it's approved by the mayor and getting ready to go to the council, at that point in time, that's when Ava will send you an invite so that you will be present to speak to the council along with the commission. They like those kinds of presentations. So, I mean, that would further solidify getting a unanimous, 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 a unanimous, unanimous vote. There are, like, I'm stuck on it. Unanimous vote from the council. We want 100%. So that's why it's always good that we have the people who brought the matter to us. Also, the mayor signing for, the 700 mayors had signed and the mayor signed on board. So it's always good to have you to make the presentation along with the commission on why this resolution is so important. And I'm sure we're gonna get 100% yays when we get to that, cross that road.
Well, thank you and thank you for your guidance.
It was Mayor Florsheim that put me onto AJC and the Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism in the first place. So I'm very appreciative of him. So anyway, thank you guys and I'll talk to you soon.
Stay safe, healthy and positive.
Indeed, everybody. Absolutely. And thank you again for your time and for your partnership.
Okay, you're welcome, Myra. We'll be in touch.
All right. Take care. And Sanji, feel better. Thank you.
Yeah. Bye-bye. Stay safe, healthy and always positive.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. So, Madam Chair, I mean, I think I will ask, you probably want all the commissioners to review this. But certainly, I think, you know, the first part of this, the wheress, is fine. The examples, I think, we might put some examples, but I don't think we need to put all of them. And then we need to think about what parts, components of this is gonna be applicable to present to the mayor.
Right.
We'll do a draft. That's what I'm saying. We'll have to do a draft.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. Okay. So how, I'm sorry, Faith.
Because there's a whole process we have to go through before it even gets to the council. So right now, we need to get a draft, you know, done. And I would pretty much leave the title, "A Resolution to Further Combat Discrimination" by, you know, by adopting the May 26th Working Definition of Anti-Semitism set forth by the International Holocaust Remembering Blah Blah Alliance. And then whereas I would like to see, and I need to find, I know it's attached to another one of the, I know I printed it. I like to make sure that one of the paragraphs relates to whereas 700 mayors across the United States signed this. So that needs to be a whereas in this this whole write-up that we do. So.
So you mean to actually include it in the actual?
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna make it our own.
Okay.
We're gonna make this our own.
Okay.
We're gonna adopt this. And this will be something that everybody can reference, what they submitted to us. But we're presenting to our common council that we are a resolution to adopt this particular working definition. And we're gonna explain the reason why. Whereas this, the other, whereas 700 mayors across the United States, including Mayor Benjamin Florsheim, have him in there, which makes it really more solidified. And then we'll pick up more of the wheress and then we'll go from there. But I gotta read all of this and just see what things we need to.
It's, I'm looking at it. I, you know, something, I can't, I don't even know. This all seems so important that I don't know what to remove, to be perfectly honest. I know, I know that. So, and I think there are some things that can be done to bring it, to make, to shrink it to two pages. But this is all important. So I don't, I don't know what we would leave out.
Well, I'll go through it. I think that we can. The little the little bullet points we can look at.
Right. That's what, yeah, that's what I was just reading.
Bullet points, some of the bullet points, I think we can look at it and there, I'm sure there's something in that pretty much captures all of that. I mean, they, they go on the, you know, contemporary examples, examples. That's what they're giving. Contemporary examples of anti-Semitism. We can do a couple. But I think the most part, important part is whereas an accomplishment to define, to the definition, to guy I H R A and its work, the following examples may be, may serve as illustrations. So those are all examples, but I think above that whereas non-legally binding definition reads in full. They're calling the nine, the non-legally binding definition reads in full. And then antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews, which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews and the rhetoric and, and community institutions or religious facilities. And then they give the examples.
Right.
And I'm, I would probably use one example. But then again, I would pretty much have the full, this full thing that they have written here as an attachment on other, as, as a reference.
I see. I see.
That's what I'm saying. We're not going to get rid of it, but we're gonna, we're gonna trim ours down so that we've got a resolution that's applicable to Middletown.
Okay.
I want to have the part as whereas 700 mayors across the United States signed this. And I'll get, I'll, I'll print that document again. I know it's attached to something, uh, where, and it recognizes, uh, and the state of Connecticut. I think Connecticut had, uh, like almost forty-some-odd mayors and selectmen sign that from Connecticut alone. And so I do want that in there because that's a reckon, a recognizable piece for the, and relates to the mayor on that our mayor took this action.
Right.
And put his name in there. So I think, I will find that so that can be one of the whereas. So we know where to put it. It might, might be near the end of our whereof or therefore be it further resolved that the town board, this is where you go to the city of Middletown. And then you can do another, uh, whereas in the public interest of the town. So I, I have to look at this and find and decide which ones, look at which one, ones I think is applicable. And then where we could fit in that one paragraph, uh, whereas or now be it further, whatever it is. Can, you can do a couple of those. So add it in there or whatever, but I'll trim it down. Now, Casey and I work on an example, but then it will reference this original document.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
It does make sense. But I, yes, totally. I was just trying to figure out like, how do we all do this? But I, I heard you say that you and Casey will trim it down.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
We'll come up with a workable copy and then what you can do is you can read it, see if it flows right. And then go back to the three-page document, see if there's something you want to put back in there. How's that?
Next. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Would it, would it be helpful to see South Windsors or West Harfords? Because they?
We, we've asked for all of that, but we, I will have my, my, um, my part-time person go and see if she can find. Since they listed the towns, I'm going to give that as assignment to her to, um, tomorrow. I'll add it to her list so that we'll have this information for the next meeting and a draft for the next meeting. So we can move forward on this.
Okay.
Uh, so I will make note here. Note, um, uh, she tried to find, we tried to find, Casey tried to find the one in South Windsor. We can't find nothing out there.
Would Jay, would Jay have a copy of it?
We've asked both of them for it.
Oh.
We've asked both of them for the one-page document. We asked them for what South Windsor put in it. We haven't gotten it.
I, I wonder if nobody's created a one-page document. Maybe that's why we haven't seen that. Yeah, I think this is what we got.
Right. But I think our council, as like Tony said, this is too long for our council. Their resolutions are generally one-page. And what I will do is I will also, once, um, I get kind of a workable draft, I will go see the common council clerk, Linda. Linda Reid.
Okay.
And say, this is what we want to do. We want to condense this, uh, has a, has it ever been a two-page resolution? I've never seen a two-page resolution, um, um, presented to the common council. I've never. It's always very tight and it's one-page. And it might be tiny print, but it's one-page. So I will note, um, have, um, my part-time assistant uh, research to see, um, what the towns above, towns listed, I'll put it in the towns listed have, um, and have endorsed as a resolution for their town. Have endorsed as a resolution for their town. Cause you know, Jay talks, but, uh, you know, I asked him for, he said Farmington. Let's see what Farmington has. It's, I mean, it's, it's all in how you present it. I think that our resolution needs to state some of this uh, about the mayor, 700 mayors, how many towns in Connecticut are supporting, have signed off to that mayor or whatever they call it, mayor selectmen, uh, support of, on the national level. Cause that's a, that's a support of this, this definition on the national level. So if the mayor signed off on it and, and in support of it on the national level, I think it's, I think it's a good move for the commission to present it as a resolution on the local level.
Uh, Faith, did you see, uh, Deb's comment that Jay said West Hartford also?
Yeah, I got West Hartford, South Windsor, Weathersfield, Mansfield and Farmington. I got five of them. So I'm going to have her look for all, at all five of those towns to see what she can find. And hopefully we can get a sample. We can get something because he said they were resolutions. They adopted it. So it has to be a resolution in order for them to adopt it or ordinance. It could be a resolution or an ordinance. I don't, I can't imagine it being an ordinance because an ordinance really im- impacts the citizens here. Uh, like paying parking tickets and stuff like that. That's what our city ordinance, code of ordinance really, um, impacts. Okay? So, um, research that, that's a research. Um, touch base with Linda. Base with, uh, Linda Reid. Did they send this as a Word document? I can't remember.
It is.
Do you recall?
Looking at it, I don't, let me see. Uh, no, it's, uh, what is that? Red, the red with the little?
Oh, that's a PDF. Well, some people know how to convert the PDF to a Word document. So I don't know. Maybe Linda will know how to do that.
Yeah.
Just so that we don't have to retype everything over. You know what I mean?
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
And then not only that, if we take something down, you want something back in there, then we don't have to recreate it. So, um, so, uh,
The?
PDF. Convert it to a Word, Word document.
Do you guys have Google? Do you use Google?
I hate Google.
Okay. Okay.
No, we don't, we don't use it. Yeah, we don't use it. And a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of the educational institutions use it and they dump documents in there. And sometimes I can get it and sometimes I can't. And I then have to go back and ask them, can you send me a Word document? So, and then draft something for commission. Something for commission. Next meeting review for next meeting. And, uh, Madam Chair, there's something else I'd like to put on your radar.
Sure.
Something that you guys might really want to, um, figure out how you want to approach this and, and, um, addressing this issue. But I've heard, uh, several, several, well, as a matter of fact, I got an email uh, from a parent. "I'm very concerned about the behavior of the students in the middle and high school. I feel that students are treated differently because of their race and can I make an appointment to talk with you? But I'm also hearing that there's tremendous fighting going on in the Middletown High School." Yes. And, um, my youth council chair's granddaughter goes to Middletown High. And she said, yes, she goes, almost every day there are fights going on. I said, why? What are they doing about it? So I don't know. I think we need to probably just find out what's going on with the fighting in the high school. Cause that needs to cease. But the students are there to, to be educated.
So I agree with you a hundred percent. And, and I've been hearing exactly, all of, all of that is, I've been hearing the same thing.
Oh, okay. Alright. I just.
Yep, absolutely. So my question is, from within our capacity, like what can we do as the HRC?
Well, as a committee, you know, one of your, hold on a minute. This is what you can do. You can invite, you can, one of your meetings can be that the HR, uh, the city's human relations commission, um, is, uh, holding. You guys can either do a meet-in, meet-in forum to hear from parents about the infighting in the high school. But I think before that, we probably need to, uh, find out, like, touch base. Maybe you as a chair, touch base with, um, Don Brooks. And just say, hey, Don, you know, we want to, as a human relations commission, we want to help you guys, you know, on, on, in any way we can and try to address the, the fighting in the schools. Can you give me an update? What's going on and blah, blah, blah? So that you'll have some information to kind of help guide us or guide the rest of the members on how they think that they can, uh, effectively, um, assist the school. And one of the things, maybe it's, it might be good that another entity is actually, um, wants to address the issue with the parents and then invite the parents as an op, in the public session. Instead of having your, 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 your regular meeting and stuff, you know, business stuff, you can actually open, you know, have the public, uh, sec, sector open for a longer time to hear from parents. To say, we understand that this is going on, but first we want to touch base with, with, I think proper protocol is to touch base with the school. And, um, Dawn is in there. She just got her doctorate and, uh, congratulations to her as my cousin. But, um, to, uh, just as a chair to touch base, just say, hey, we're hearing this. Because your, your, your issue, one of your tasks and responsibilities is to hear concerns and to address, um, let me find, find your definition here, because I'm pulling it together for the new chief of staff. A package for her on all my committees and stuff. As personnel, all that. Mission on. So yours is to foster mutual understanding and respect among all racial and religious and ethnic groups of the community to ensure equality of treatment of any racial, religious or ethnic groups or any of its members to sure equality opportunity for all individuals. Um,
So are we assuming that the fights are primarily be, uh, being perpetrated by people of color?
We don't know. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I have no, no, I have no idea who's doing it. All I know is that there's just fighting, regular fighting going on in the school. And regular fighting should not be going on in the school. So does the school system? I think we need to, as, uh, the commission that deals with, uh, making sure that we enlist the cooperation of various racial, religious and ethnic groups and community organizations, labor organizations, paternities and beneficial associations, and other groups and programs and campaign devoted to, devoted to eliminating group prejudice, intolerance, bigotry and discrimination. And then we want to study the problems of prejudice and tolerance, bigotry, discrimination and disorder occasions, uh, occasion thereby in all, in any fields of human relations. You just want to make things better. So you understand that this is going on in the schools and the parents, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing from people. They want to talk about stuff is going on and they think it's based on race. This one, this one mother thinks it's based on race. I don't know what it is, but she wanted to make an appointment. Talk to me.
So, so, yeah. So that, I guess that answers my question. If she believes it's based on race, that, that's the question that I also need to follow up with, um, with, uh, Ms. Brooks. And so you mentioned Beaman. What was the concern there? I didn't write that down. I'm sorry.
Yeah, she indicated the middle school, but I haven't heard anything in the middle school. I have heard, um, uh, I actually heard from the senior who goes to Middletown High. And I said, is this true? I said, they, they said there's a lot of fighting going on. And I said, in our youth council meeting, she goes, yeah. She goes, Faith, she goes, uh, Ms. Jackson, she goes, there's fighting, it seems to occur almost every week. And she goes, there could be fighting at one end of the hall and then fighting at the other end of the hall. I said, two fights going on at the same time? She goes, oh yeah, that's subject to happen.
I've actually heard from parents that were in Middletown that have moved because they said the fights have gotten so bad. And I was, I was like surprised because I, I, you know, you don't know. And also I have, uh, uh, um, junior in the Middletown High School system. And to hear from her about what's going on in the school system is unbelievable.
So it is happening then?
It is happening.
So it is not only happening in Middletown, and I can say that because I work with children and I see children from all districts. And kids are struggling because parents and teachers are struggling. We're in a pandemic. People are extremely anxious and depressed and confused and look at the world. We are watching people act up. And so
Absolutely.
I mean, they're no different from us. You know, we're, we're just taller and we got more knowledge because we've been on the planet longer. But they are experiencing all of this, just like we are. Um, so, but of course I'll check in with, um, with Ms. Brooks to see. Um, and, and I don't know if Ms. Brooks is the right person because if this is happening at Beaman and MHS, like should this be, should we be asking questions of the, um, the Board of Education Administration?
Well, I think we can, but first I think we need, because they may not know either. Just like, you know, I wasn't aware that this, uh, fighting was going on at this level. They said, no, it's gotten worse. I think we need to just gather some, this is fact-finding. So I think it'd be good to start with the high school, since that's where they're saying that they are happening on a regular basis. I don't know who the principal is for Beaman and my, um, my great nephew goes to Beaman, but he hasn't said anything. So I don't know if it's, he's just too far removed from it or what. But I think after we gathered some information, as a human relations commission, as someone who's trying to make sure that things go well in the community, you know, fostering good relationships in the whole nine yards, if this is an issue, we, we want to raise, raise, uh, awareness of this and we want to help work, work with the parents and stuff. So maybe some other kind of things that can be recommended as some after-school forums or something like that. I mean, there's a lot of ways I think you can, can, once we gather enough information and work with the BOE and bring it to the Board of Ed, that there are issues and that we are now concerned that this is what children are in, in, um, you know, encountering when they should be, uh, they're going, they're, they're sent to school for education. So there are, there is bigger things going on and we need to kind of address that issue. And I think this is good for the commission to do.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I just want to make sure that it's within the scope of what we should be doing. Um, yeah, that's it.
So what else I can actually tell you is happening is that there are parents that are stalking this website or going on the, the website and they're making comments on the fights and they're, um, you know, every kid has a phone. So videos are getting out of the fights and they're calling kids' names and they're saying whatever they want because there's no filter. So that part is getting out of hand and these are parents that don't even have children in the schools anymore. And I've, I've seen this happen.
And so what people do is they hide behind their freedom of speech.
Right.
And, and so we certainly couldn't tell people what to say, um, although it is disgusting. Sanji, I agree with you. And it was, and, and the things that I've heard that adults have said about children and about their parents, um, is unnecessary and ridiculous and deplorable. Um, but the reality is that's, that's what's happening in the world right now. Everybody's, everybody's pointing the finger at each other.
And then, you know, they say, well, this kid should have this and this kid should be locked up and this kid should be this. But nobody's addressing what the problem is. And the problem is the kids are fighting in school.
Good. So we need to figure out, yeah, what's happening. Okay.
And then how, why, why is it that the parents get to comment and they don't come to school to, to try to rectify the problems? But they get to. But they get to comment and hide behind a screen.
So now we, we, we realize that it's, it's, it's an issue. And now that we're aware of it, we, I think we, y- you really wanna address it, you know, as, um. An active project for this, on behalf of the city.
Yeah, and I think, I think this will fall under new, new, uh, initiatives.
Yes.
New business, okay.
Yes, it would, it would.
Okay.
And most definitely, we need, um, students to be involved as well, because, you know. Students that would normally not be involved in these type of incidences are.
Hmm, that's good to know, Sanji.
Because actually, my niece was involved in one of these incidences and it, we're like, do we have to come to school now? And actually, she was trying to break up a fight. And, you know, we saw a video of it and she was telling the girl, I'm helping you, like, I'm not fighting you, I'm helping you. And we knew that if my niece wanted to really fight the girl, she would have hurt her. And we're like, you probably would hurt most boys in the school if you really wanted to fight. But it's not her nature, she is a gentle giant, you know what I mean, she is a gentle giant. But you don't have to fight. But I think people feel so entitled to go up to someone and say, you did this, you did this. And they're targeting, well, this is, this is the, the scenario, a white girl went up to a black girl and. Had nothing to do with anything and stuck her nose where it didn't belong and basically targeted them. And then a fight broke out.
Oh.
So, you know, when you're pushed, your back is up against the wall. And you can't take it anymore, what else are you supposed to do?
Okay, so now that adds a different layer, are these.
It is a different layer.
Are these fights racially motivated?
So, this, this particular incident, I guess, from what I was told, there was being, there was food being thrown in the cafeteria. From another table. And, um, it was a white boy sitting at a table and food was being thrown at him. And, um, a white girl went over to the table and was like, what's going on? And he said, someone's throwing food and he said, she goes, where's it coming from, she, he goes, I don't know, over there. So she goes to the table where my niece and one of her friends was sitting. Why are you throwing food? They said, we weren't, it's coming from over there. So she took it upon herself to insert herself in a situation that had nothing to do with her, she didn't know the boy. But she inserted herself into something that had nothing to do with her. And then she targeted them for the rest of the day. And then. Followed her to the class, followed to the next class and then in the hallway. One of her friends, my niece's friend was like, you know what, it, it's time, basically, and that's how the fight started. And then my niece tried to break it up and actually, um, Dawn's daughter tried to break it up too.
And so I'm thinking that, uh, once, you know, you touch base with, um, you know, Ms. Brooks, then, um. We may need to want to hear from the acting superintendent. And then this commission might wanna hold, um, maybe, uh, a couple of open forums to get feedback from students. And then feedback from parents. And then come up with some resolutions to, working with the school. The school to help, um, implement some. Some, some kind of programs and stuff, programming that will help people to either air or, or have. Dialogue or whatever, talk about things because apparently COVID has really, you know, really stretched people very far. And students have really suffered a lot, they just don't know how to communicate it in a lot of different ways. Uh, they, it's all bent up and what have you, um, parents are just so stretched by the time they get home, some of them probably don't even. Ask the kid how the day was.
Well, I bet the, I think kids know how to communicate very well, which is why we are talking about it right now.
Well, they do want social, social media. But that's the whole thing, social media is one thing, but being able to really express themselves. In person with one another. You see what I'm saying, they've lost that inter- that connection, that human connection. It's not just machine, it's, and they can say anything what they want without any feeling, any compassion. But to sit there and say something face-to-face to somebody, now you're on a different level.
So my, 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 um, my, my comment was really speaking to the fact that. Even though they're not using their words, they are using a different form of communication, they're using aggression. And so by their actions, as the adults, we can see that there's a problem. We don't have to ask, we know, we see it, so we have to figure out. Either what's happening with the adults in the building because they are in charge. Um, and why this, why all of this is happening.
Well, the adults might be in charge, but again, you know, to say something, then it creates another. It escalates to another, another, and I'll tell you, I'm sure, I'm sure most of these teachers are fearful to say anything.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be honest with you, I just think they're fearful to intervene, to say anything because they do not know how that kid's gonna come off on, on them. And so there you have, uh, this, this, this barrier, um, uh, put up. So that nobody's doing nothing because of fear of doing something might end up resulting in some kind of bodily harm or something, okay?
Right, absolutely.
In the video, there was a teacher there and, you know, he, he was afraid to intervene.
Sure.
Right, 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 because either, I, so what, what, what we've seen in our world is either people do nothing or they overreact, right?
Yes, and so that's where we, we need to, we need to get a handle on this, I think. Now and work, uh, with, with the school system to try to, you know. See if we can come up with some viable, reasonable resolutions to all of this. To try to correct behavior, we're talking about correcting behavior in the school system. This is unacceptable behavior for the school system, so, uh, you're there to learn. And teachers can't do their job if they're fearful that, you know, you're gonna get jumped and whatever else and all this other stuff, so I mean. I think this is.
And you know, let me correct myself, I don't mean that he was afraid to intervene because I've had all the PMT intervention training, so I could have intervened. Under that scope. So. Now, seeing all of this ensue, it, it, it's normal to me. But for him, maybe it wasn't. So I don't mean that it was, he was afraid to intervene, I don't mean that.
Well, I don't know either, I mean, but the point is unless we have dialogue and communications and that people can start, you know, communic-. Speaking how they're really feeling, you're never gonna get it out of your system and you're never gonna move to the next level of resolving anything, it's just gonna continue to be. A vicious cycle and, uh, you know, to hear that it's escalating, that tells me that there is, this, this is a serious i- uh, issue that needs to be addressed. And the community, which is the commission, needs to kind of engage itself after hearing this, you know. We're now trying to connect with and collab- collaboratively work with the school system to add- address an issue.
Rosa DeLauro's calling me.
Whoa, you better answer that.
Yeah, I would.
There's probably like one of those city, um. Town council, like, one of those.
Yeah, they were, or it could be, or it could be Rosa DeLauro.
No, she'd probably have somebody co- uh, from her office contact you.
Yeah.
Then says, then they say, she would like to speak with you, I said, okay, thank you. So, so that's an idea, I mean, it's up to you, Madam Chair, I'm just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, so.
No, I agree, I agree, and yes, absolutely. Um, so, uh, since we, we don't, we, we're not gonna vote on anything, this was, you know, as always, even though we're not, we don't have a quorum, our conversation. Um, is really, uh, important. And I definitely think, so we got a few important issues that we need to move forward, um, and so. Uh, there's nothing we can do about illness, right, so people are sick and, and so that's partially why we're not, we're not, um. Making quorum every month, but there's a couple, I'm not sure about Ed, has anybody spoken to Ed, do we know why he's not? It didn't, because we haven't seen him in quite a few months.
Well, Ed has indicated that his job, he doesn't get out, I guess, until five. And that depends on if. I guess he has meetings and stuff to, to that nature or last minute, because he's, like I said, people are just popping up meetings, you know, I'll look in my email and go. That's tomorrow, are they kidding me, let me see what's on my calendar, let's see if I can get it in. You know, people are just making meetings, not knowing what everybody's schedule is and I believe. Uh, I don't know if his wife. Has delivered or had the baby yet or not, I don't know. I know they're expecting their first, yes. He is str- he's, I tell you, he's spread out everywhere and you gotta, he's gotta rope it in.
A lot going on, um. Okay, well, I guess we'll just pray for the best.
Yeah, we can, I'll have Casey follow up with, uh, is that Ed and is there anybody else, no, I think that's it, just, also Casey follow up with, uh. Have Casey follow up with Ed, just to see where he's at.
Yeah, cause Tony, um, Tony, Sasha and, um, and Henry are usually here.
Yes.
And Howard, that's what's going on with Howard, we should check in on him.
Oh, yeah, let's find out, yeah, maybe he's just having technical difficulty, I don't know, normally he lets us know.
Right.
Casey follow up, okay.
Yeah, I had to delete the app and then re. Um, do it for some reason today. I don't know, just, guess it needed a reboot too.
Yeah, I don't know what to tell you, but, um, this is what the city uses, so I'm stuck, so, sorry folks. Alright, Madam Chair, is there anything else to claim our attention?
Uh, I, I can't think of anything else.
Yeah, great dialogue, great meeting, yeah. And we'll work on these things and, uh, we'll get. Um, a pass through to you once we find out and I'll have my, like I said, we'll do the research, I'll touch base with Linda and we'll have some kind of draft. Ready for next meeting, this next meeting for the, what, which meeting, uh, for the June.
June fifteenth, I think.
Yes, June fifteenth meeting, okay. We will do that, okay? And then.
Deb has a question before we.
But in the chair, and as the chair, you're gonna touch base with, uh, and I just need to make, uh, chair. Chair will touch base with, uh, Dawn Brooks.
Deb, I only saw half of your question.
Yeah, I saw it come up and I couldn't read it fast enough.
Yeah. It was, the beginning of it was ask Faith something, but I don't know what Deb wanted us to ask Faith.
Oh, let's see what's in the. Enter ch- uh, no, well. Oh, yeah, ask Faith to look into why she can't see my messages. I saw it when it came up, but I don't know where it is now, normally you can go scroll in the chat. Oh, here we go, wait a minute. Let's see, alright, Deb's got everything in here. All we gotta do is go to the chat, we could scroll up from Sanji to everyone, I agree. From Myra. Okay, where's Deb? If you want HR input for this, I would be. It would be better in person, I don't know what HR. Input is, after we have reviewed what's out there, don't know what she means by that.
Well, well, because she, this is, these are, she was referencing what we were talking about at the time.
Alright. And then still, oh, oh, here we go, also heard about the high school here, this was the one that came up and I didn't quite catch. Also heard about the high school fighting, what is Dawn's job? I wonder if because Howard's absent could have to do with, he had trouble getting in Zoom meeting and also being able to hear. Well, that's possible, we'll find out, but if that, if he, if he. If he's still having difficulty hearing, I can put the caption on when I do the recording. And it will, whatever, whatever, whatever anybody's saying will appear in caption at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, cool.
So I can do that, that, but I will have Casey, that's what I have, Casey, have Casey follow up with Henry and have Casey follow up, uh, with Or.
With Howard and then, Howard?
Howard and, and, yeah, I have note here for, and I, what I do is I make a copy of my, um. The agenda, all my notes and stuff and Casey then will follow through on that, cause, of course she needs it anyways for time-wise and stuff. So, that's what it is, but it's not Zoom, it's WebEx, so.
Right, right.
All he has to do is click on that green button, join meeting. But. I don't know what else to tell you. Good point, Deb, thank you, but I don't know what else to tell you. But we'll follow up with him, we will follow up, I'll have Casey follow up tomorrow with him, okay?
Thanks, Deb.
Alright, so, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Sanji.
Oh, are we voting to end?
Nope, we don't need to vote, so, it's six fifteen and I'm gonna call the meeting to, uh, to close.
Okay, sixteen, six fifteen, thank you so much, everyone, stay safe, healthy and positive and thank you for your presence this evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, yes, okay. Have a great one, stay safe, healthy and positive, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Ending meeting.